This is a special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. Today's Thursday, November 3rd, 2022. It's just 6:30 PM. And we're going to say the pledge if you'll join us.
............................................................
Thank you. Roll call, please, Randy.
Okay, trustee Larue.
Here.
Trustee Winslow.
Present.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Retary is here. And Supervisor Durin.
Here.
Staff present is Manager Cangis.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you a little preface before we even get into public comment. This is really not an informational meeting. We have called this meeting and Manager Cangis is going to elaborate in a few minutes. Because in order to apply for any help from the Road Commission and funding for this assumed infrastructure money that may be available, we have to have the application in to, I suppose Lansing, I'm not sure, by the 15th. So the purpose... Yes, thank you. The purpose of this meeting is to do that. And we have, and there should be some copies out there. We have a sample or a draft letter to the Road Commission and a draft conversation from the manager explaining kind of what we're doing. So the idea is that we will have roughly two options that the Road Commission will put forth on our behalf. And then they can start the whole engineering, what works, what doesn't? How much is it going to cost? What direction do we go? Then that starts. So this is very preliminary. We're not going to be able to give you any specific information at all. John has some, like I said, but just so you're not expecting, you know, everything exact. And we did put the map up just so you can kind of see the rough area. Okay, so if anybody would like to comment, feel free to come on up to the podium. Give us your name and address. And we'll keep your comments on file for sure.
Good evening. L.R. Swadley, 135 Hidden Springs in Marquette Township. I was in at the meeting a few weeks ago when you folks made the decision to not support the County Road Commission's bypass road. Many of the residents of the area came to several meetings of the board and a couple of the Planning Commission as well. I just, I wasn't here, but I really appreciate that you folks voted not to support their their plan there, the tentative proposed plan. And because it seemed to be pretty clear that the residents in the area felt pretty strongly about the impact on that. And at the Planning Commission level, too, I think it was a consensus, maybe not everyone, but for me anyway, I can speak, that I wasn't opposed to Long Ear's development of residential in that area. We're opposed to the high density in an area that is obviously, well, zone senior residential, five acre minimum. You know, and the pattern of development there and the folks that live on both sides of the river is acreage homesites. And that's what your residents, and I was just really glad that you folks recognized that and voted accordingly. So looking forward to the discussion and seeing perhaps working together towards finding solutions for Forestville's intersection regardless of any development or not, you know, in that area. So it's really, I came here to see, I didn't know you were drafting a letter of support for the Road Commission for their funding. And I guess, and I haven't had an opportunity to read it, but I guess maybe more information will be forthcoming. But my real question would be is to make sure that that application to the state is not specifically for that bypass. It's more of a general funding, which I kind of find that be, they're making a very specific request for funding. It seems to me they would have to have that pretty well nailed down, an application to the state where, what, how much. So anyway, thank you.
Anybody else before we get going?
Roger Berry, 205 Huron Woods Drive. I just have a couple of comments on the intersection with Wright Street. Something ought to be done right away to move that utility post, which you have to look around, make a left there, and move it somewhere else. That will make it safer. I had a serious accident there a couple of years ago. It totaled a car. The only way I survived is the car I had had a structure based on the 500 race. Otherwise, I may not be standing here. So the people drive far too fast on 41, I mean on Wright Street. And I see that you've asked the Road Commission to lower the speed on it. In addition to that, it would be nice to have some law enforcement in there, too. So that's a suggestion. The other thing is, from my viewpoint, the issue of the intersection at Wright Street with Forestville Road is part of a major issue, and that is all of Wright Street. The traffic on that road has increased every year, and it is now. Something's going to have to be done. And I suggest that the Road Commission be, get together with them and see if they're willing to work through something that would include both the intersection there and Wright Street. So that's all. My three minutes are up.
Okay, thanks, Roger.
Can I ask a real quick question? Is it the utility pole?
Roger?
Is... The utility pole you started your comments with?
Yes.
That's immediately to the northeast of the intersection?
Yeah, it's when you're waiting to go out on the road, back there on your lap.
Okay. All right.
I suggested that a couple of years ago, when they did a little bit of redoing of that street, the intersection, and nothing came of it. So I mentioned it again, so, yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not sure we can get anything done with it, but we'll try if it makes sense.
Okay, who else? Feel free. Okay, we can get started. Any board member comment with what you heard?
I'd just like to say to Roger that we did, we did address the issue with the speed with our sheriff's department, our sheriff's department. And he's been sitting there just about every day. Just little people.
I've noticed that, too.
Most people have seen him sitting there, so they are addressing it.
What are they doing?
They're sitting there with their radar and trying to catch speeders.
I haven't seen them stop anybody.
Yeah, I saw one the other day. He was writing a ticket, actually, so it must have been really going fast. Yeah. That was brought up at one of the meetings that we had, and I texted the sheriff before we even left the meeting and got a response back, "It's done." So they were actually out there the next morning. So it worked great.
We can touch on the speed limit establishment a little bit, too, if everyone has the time and is willing to listen to it again.
Yep, that would be good. What, Pete?
Roger, the sheriff's department is sitting south of Commerce on the left and east, yeah. He sits right in there, Cove there.
I was told that they can't put a roundabout there because of some issues. One of them, I think, is the coming downhill there. We worry about trucks being able to stop. But my opinion is, these things can be solved if they look at them in a more serious way instead of just saying, "We can't do it."
I totally agree.
We will, John will address that, too, tonight, a little bit. Okay, should we get going then? I don't have anything other than approving the agenda.
Correct. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Discussion on options in the Forestville Transportation Network that does not include the bypass road that the Township Board did not support. So, John, take it away.
All right. I may have to get up here at some point to kind of show you some things on the screen. But we had a meeting, I believe it was last Thursday afternoon, with the Road Commission, Invest U.P., Long Ear, the City of Marquette, to discuss the options we have available, knowing that the bypass road to the west of Huron Woods is off the table. And in that meeting, Invest U.P. suggested that there is still a chance, depending on what happens in the election next Tuesday, that there could be some action regarding funding with some of this infrastructure money that's sitting in Lansing unspent from the federal government. So we still have a moment of opportunity if we want to try to do something with the traffic issues we have for the Forestville Road area, Forestville Road in particular. The Road Commission has agreed to come back to the table and work with the Township, but it requires Township Board support of their new request in order for them to submit a new request. As part of this request, because they do not have the time to do an elaborate feasibility study before November 15th, they have to include two options. I'll tell you what my preferred option is, and it's one of those two. It's to address all of the concerns that exist with Forestville Road and its intersection with County Road 492. That is the first option that will be in their funding request if you agree to support their request. The second option may also be required in addition to the first option, or it may be required on its own if the first option doesn't work. And I'll tell you why it's important. It's because the Road Commission still has significant concerns about being able to improve that intersection of Commerce Drive, County Road 492 or Wright Street and Forestville Road to significantly improve the safety concerns there. And there's a myriad of concerns associated with that. My first choice, I'd love to see a roundabout there. And if they can figure out a way to do it, I'll be the first one standing in line to cheer that first shovel of dirt being moved. I'd love to see it. I'm a big fan of the roundabouts. I think they move traffic. They are safer because the impacts are more broadside as opposed to head-on or T-bone, as long as everyone goes right instead of turning left, correct? And we've seen it. We are still in the U.P. and we're pretty far away from a lot of them, but we have plenty of them in Marquette County now. I think most of us know how to use them. If they can find a way to work, and oh, by the way, they have reached out to the foremost expert on roundabouts in the state of Michigan. It's the same guy that was involved with the team that designed every one of them along our highway. So he is going to give them an opinion. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed for everybody because I think that's the safest intersection you can build. But there's other issues there. There's wetland and stream issues, especially on the west side, which is the Forestville roadside. I think everyone knows where those are. There's topography issues on pretty much every side. There's horizontal curve issues, especially on the County Road 492 slash Wright Street and Forestville legs. There's winter truck traffic in particular, the truck traffic in general, but in winter especially. Meaning if it gets, a truck gets stopped or slowed to any speed well below normal travel speed, can they get going again up the hill to get to the highway? I think the same could be said about any truck coming up Forestville Road, which probably doesn't happen that often currently. But if they can fit a roundabout in there, it's probably a $3 million cost. They're talking about a $10 million ask, so where's the rest of the money go? I'll show you now, and...
You don't actually need that, John.
So this switchback here, everyone knows is not fun to drive, especially in the winter. It's a pretty steep grade on the way down with a hard left on the bottom. And then you've got a hard right onto the bridge. Ideally, Long Ear owns the property. They're willing to work with the Road Commission for the right of way. They straighten that out. But it still ends up being an 8% grade. So we know the Road Commission has looked at that enough to know that it's going to be steep. Not ideal for trucks, and that's, that's okay for me personally.
8% is the maximum grade that they designed to go.
Yeah. But in the winter, they're probably not going to make it anyway.
Yeah, even for trucks, it's the maximum grade.
I think there's a way that you can, maybe instead of having a curve to the east and then back, you go a little bit closer to the bulk launch and then come back. But there's still about $2 million worth of rock removal there all by itself without building any road. So we're all of a sudden up to half a million. Where does the last 10 go? Can you pull that down, Randy?
I can.
Where do the last five of the 10 go? We think this part, somewhere in here, is probably going to be on the developer, right? If they actually get a plan approved for this property? So that's pretty safe. But you still need the connection to this haul road that the Road Commission has recently acquired. That's all gravel road. This piece was never built to County Road standards. This piece was, with a little bit of gravel and shaping, they can pave it. This piece, they could pull the gravel that's there off to the side, reshape everything to County standards, put the gravel back, and then add some more and pave it. That then becomes part of the county maintained network. It's no longer seasonal. I think NTN would love that, I'm guessing. They need to straighten out the crossing over the railroad grade, which I think everyone agrees will be another great safety improvement if they can get the railroad to agree. So there's some work there. We're running out of 10 million in a hurry, right? A 10 million ask is not that unreasonable. Now, what happens if that roundabout expert says, "We can't do it here? We've got a problem." If they can't put a roundabout there, they're not going to be able to put a traffic signal there either. That's my guess. In fact, I wouldn't want to see a traffic signal there. Stopping that many people there all the time is going to create more problems than we currently have, in my opinion. So we need another way in and out. What do you do? This option is off the table, right? This, this board already said, "No, they're not ready for that." It's still in our plan, so we got to talk about that, too. And that's in my memo. The staff doesn't know what we should do about that in the future when it comes up again. So we're going to have to talk about it after we get this issue addressed. So there is an option to go east. Looking at it on paper, it kind of makes sense that you just come straight through here with Wright Street, right? I don't personally think it would be that straightforward because now you have a goofy intersection here. So there's going to have to be something between the existing intersection, and I'm going to say probably as far as BLP, somewhere in there, a new intersection that comes through and ties in. And I'm going to say somewhere on the north side of this ATC easement. And the reason why I say that is because this chunk of property right here is owned by Long Ear, and they're committed to getting their development improved somehow. So they've got to contribute in a significant way, right of way, towards this east connector. What we don't know yet, how far they have to go before they come back to 492. I can tell you, me just looking at the map, this is the straightest sight distance piece. So that would make sense to me that it's the most reasonable option. The problem is you've got private property issues there again. So does it go beyond? I don't know. The further you go, now you have the Penn Stock, you've got the Dead River, possibly multiple crossings. We're already running out of money, so I'm double-crossing fingers. We need to find a way to get a roundabout in there. Jim Iwaniki said in this room not that long ago, "Anything can be built with the right amount of money." Just like Long Ear could build houses along this steep bridge right here, but it's not practical, right? So if they can find a way to get that to happen, I'm going to be a happy guy. I think it solves the majority of the issues we have here. And if they get the funding for this, then they're going to have the funding for that. Forestville Road suddenly looks like a much different access point to our high-demand residential areas now, right? Because we have the property and we're wanting to develop as that. And all the recreation we have up here, and we know that's only growing. So that's kind of what this ask is for. There's no line drawn on paper yet like we had for this option. Because that option was already in the transportation plan, both at the county and township level. So we can't tell you what the impact is going to be to private property owners. We assume there might be some. But the Road Commission's doing nothing without your support. And I guess that's, that's about all I can tell you beyond, I don't know that we have another good option or way forward with this option off the table. So...
So the idea is we're presenting the two?
Both options, not knowing which one is going to work.
We'll present the two.
Hopefully, it doesn't turn out that neither of them work.
Do you have...
But I will say, when I talked to the Road Commission, I think it was yesterday afternoon, they did say the option to the east is knock off the table out of yesterday.
So do you think they're going to do any kind of engineering draft or anything before the 15th to hone it down, or will they...
They won't pay for it.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
They won't pay for it without money to build it.
Okay.
Jim has made that perfectly clear. You have $150,000 set aside for the repaving of Forestville Road, which you're probably not going to have to pay if this development happens. You want to pay for engineering, preliminary engineering?
It's a preliminary ask at this point.
I mean, I'm just throwing this out there because if we're going to ask for something, we have to be ready for it because they aren't going to unless they have the money to do
What about a road coming down farther on Wright Street than coming?
What do you mean?
Connect with Forestville Road up higher and then exit over on Wright Street down on the flat part.
Well, that's, that's kind of what they're suggesting. We just don't know where that new intersection is. And it would be a T-intersection, probably with a left turn lane on Wright Street, so that it's safe turns for everybody with clear sight distance along ways in each direction, knowing that once you leave the city, it is a 55 mile per hour speed limit. By the way, that 55 mile per hour speed limit, we don't have a choice on that. That's the 85th percentile, and state law dictates 85th percentile to the nearest five mile per hour increment is the speed.
It's posted 45.
Posted 45.
Not anymore. Well, it is, it is in this, when you leave the city.
It is at the school that you're heading this way to.
Okay, during school hours.
After it says end of school zone, speed limit.
No, anyone then?
45.
45 is the safe design speed.
The speed limit signs that are out there currently in the township are only associated with speed limits in the school zone.
It's a white speed limit sign.
Yeah, I know, but there's school hour, zone hours underneath it.
Nope.
Wouldn't you agree?
End of school zone, speed limit 45.
Wouldn't you agree that's a safe speed?
I'm not lying, folks.
I'm not lying either.
We drive it every day.
Okay, I'm not disagreeing that there might be a sign out there that they didn't take down. This speed limit on Wright Street in the township is 55 miles per hour. They agreed not to post it, hoping that it won't invite people to go faster than they used to. When a sheriff's officer sits out there, they can't pull you over for going 55 because it's a legally, it's legally 55 mile per hour speed zone. We don't want to advertise that any more than I just did. They agreed not to put the 55 mile per hour speed limit signs up because they knew we didn't want it to go up.
Fair enough.
So they at least gave us that.
Imploded 45.
Then, then why is the highway 50?
80th percentile.
Like what?
It's, it's the, the speed that 85% of motorists are comfortable driving. If they posted... You got to talk to the state police. This is all established by law in this, at the state level. We have no control of it. I'm sorry, that's... They don't like it, I don't like it, it's the way it is. In fact, this board agreed to send a letter to Senator McBroom's office, which went to the state police, and they gave us their response, and it's exactly what we expected and response. It's in the law. And if they post it below the 85th percentile, it's, they have plenty of studies to support their argument that it's less safe. I can't argue with that.
Big law, don't change a sign.
They are a much bigger entity than we are willing to fight. That's my opinion.
45.
We don't, I don't think very many of us really like that. But that's the way it is.
Sure. Too fast, isn't it?
Don't advertise to anyone that the speed limit is actually 55 because more people will then be driving 64. Nine, you're fine, 10, you're mine? Is that the way it works?
Any questions for John?
So if you feel compelled to support this new option, which I think, as I stated in my memo, is probably the best option, and quite honestly, I hope it ends up being this, because that's where it already is. We actually have a willing property owner here to work with us if right-of-way acquisition is needed, and we think that's the direction it would have to go to fit a roundabout there. But we also have limited opportunity there, too, because the demand for office buildings is still high, even in this economy. So they're going to need to decide how much property they, they can develop there soon.
John, did you say that you were cutting back on the hill as it is right now? When you leave Forestville to your right, that hill right there, did you ever consider cutting back on that hill, trimming it down a little bit so that the sight, clear sights go into the left?
Over here?
To the right? Yeah.
That would be Dr. Pesola's property?
Yeah.
If they could get an easement from him to do clearing, they could probably do it. Would they? I don't know. But my personal experience at this intersection, it's traffic coming south on Wright Street. That's the problem, trying to get off of Wright Street. Because they come around that corner, and if you just look that way, look this way, you see nobody, you look that way again, nobody, you look back, and boom, they're there. That's how quick it happens. So I, I'm personally glad I don't live there right now. Are we taking questions from the audience, or...
Let's stay to the board for a minute, just to make sure.
So my question, John, is, so if the board approves these two options possibly with support, and you go down and ask, and you get zero, what does that mean?
Nothing happens.
You pay for its expenses.
That means the pressure is on the developer, first of all, to find another solution if they want to develop their property the way they're proposing to. It puts pressure on the township to limit the density that they will be allowed to build at. Because they've got about a threshold of about 100 new homes right now with the existing intersection. That's the rough numbers that, that they've come up with.
50% of their project, yeah.
And that's just the first 200-something acres of property they own. So the pressure would be on the developer to figure out what they want to do in order to make their project profitable.
So this project at this point can still go many directions.
100% true. We could have a weird election result next Tuesday, and there'd be no willingness to move on any money. That could buy us a little bit of time because the money won't go anywhere. The issue is, if there's activity with this infrastructure money during a lame duck session, the request needs to be there, or we won't get any.
I almost have to go down and ask for it.
Right. And we, we've heard from, from Invest U.P. that they think the money will be there if, if there's support for a properly scoped project. To the point Mr. Swadley made, I don't know if the scope will be clear enough for them to agree to commit $10 million. But that responsibility will have to be on the Road Commission to write their request in a way that's convincing enough not to turn it down. You've got economic development. You've got a project that addresses probably the biggest issue we have nationwide, not just the state or the county or locally. It's nationwide, we have a housing shortage. I think that's probably going to settle down. Um, I think that's probably going to settle down a little bit, but there's still people that need homes. Does this address affordable housing? No. The developer has said they plan to sell market rate housing. We don't have control over that. They came to us with their proposed project, we need to make sure it meets our requirements. That's about our only role in it. So, um, we do know from their own traffic study that they cannot build what they're currently proposing with the current transportation network. And they know it. So, um, I, I think they're willing to participate to the extent that is reasonable. Um, we just don't know how far that really goes. At some point, they walk away, and maybe that's fine. But I, I would guess, um, the pressure's on, based on the interest they have in their project, to move it forward.
Well, my comment is, is if we don't do anything, that intersection is going to be unsafe for the foreseeable future. So, um, I would move to authorize the supervisor to send a letter of support, at least these two options stated in the letter, and send that to the road commission.
I'll second that.
Comments?
Well, this is my comment. We have to do, this is our, maybe our only chance in a lifetime to do something with this intersection. If it doesn't happen now, it might not happen ever. So, we might as well try anyway.
One other thing I did not say that this proposal does that the original proposal didn't do, is it minimizes the impact on additional property owners. We had probably close to a dozen property owners that would end up, would have ended up, uh, in condemnation proceedings if they couldn't come to terms without it. Uh, this one, we don't know, but I would guess it's probably no more than one or two. Uh, maybe there's a willing participant that happens to be right where this has to go, but I don't know that that's the case either, because I don't know enough information about where the new intersection would hit four ninety-two.
And that's a long road, that's, that's still a long road away, because you need the funding in order to start that. If you don't get the funding, you're back at ground zero.
Yep, it's, it's a little bit of a chicken or the egg type of situation.
But if we don't ask for this, we'll never get it.
Correct.
We just do what has to be cleaned up somewhere, somehow, you know?
I mean, I agree with the manager, I think myself, around about is the preferred met, because they do work, and any accidents in the roundabout usually are life-threatening for the most part. And it would slow traffic down in that part. It would do a lot of things for that stretch of roadway that would probably be better for all the residents there.
Yeah, but you're still dealing with truck traffic, winter conditions that, as well as all the geometric issues that exist there that they have to figure out. So, we don't know.
That's why, that's why there's salt and sand.
Have you talked to any, uh, semi-people?
I have not, because the roads are not my responsibility. I know Jim has indicated he intends to work with a hauling, I, I don't know if it's Van Dam or who, but to, to actually do some tests out there this winter, when, under various conditions, to see if they came to a stop fully loaded, would they be able to get going again? That's not to say it would give you a real-life scenario, because if they built a roundabout at the existing intersection, I think it would have to be four or five feet higher than the current elevation. It'd have to be flatter across from the corner by AMA to just south of Commerce Drive. So, um, when I looked at the centerline profile from the project they did a couple of years ago, that, that was the first thing I noticed, is they would flatten, flatten out that whole dip from the high point. I don't know, maybe they'd cut down the high point to the north, but.
You would raise Forestville Road a little bit.
Yeah, well, we can't engineer it here, right? But those are the little things that I see they could do.
Yes, the manager?
Did you want to, there were a couple of hands raised, want to take those questions first?
I just want to make sure the board was covered. Go ahead.
Who was first, Nate?
I just was, and maybe you said this, and I didn't catch it, but so, if, if the roundabout at Forestville Road and Wright Street is, they, they deem it, like, that's not going to happen, and that you end up going with that east road out to Wright Street, what's going to happen to the intersection at Forestville Road? Is that going to be nonexistent, or? Because you don't really fix anything if, if you leave it the way it is, and.
You read my memo, didn't you?
I, I.
There's still a possibility of needing a double cul-de-sac or a single cul-de-sac. Here's what I think, and I'm an engineer that's not practicing as an engineer, I'm practicing as an administrator, so take this for what it's worth. If they cannot redesign this intersection safely with a roundabout, it probably means this leg is never going to be safe. So, if you're running a new road from Wright Street, uh, Forestville out to four ninety-two, somewhere in there, I don't know what that looks like. Do you cul-de-sack the road at the southernmost driveway, which I think is Dr. Peselos', so that everyone has to go out there? Do you put a double cul-de-sack here so that they can still go out, but to get to Forestville, now they have to go around? Those were some of the concerns we heard at the last meeting, in that, okay, so you double cul-de-sack that you're still going to force us to use this unsafe intersection. I don't know what the right answer is, these are all the possibilities that could happen. My opinion is, if you can't make that intersection safe, you stop this road, make everyone go to the new safe intersection. That's my opinion. But I'm not the road engineer, the road commission's going to come up with what they, they think is best, if they get money to fund the project. So there's a lot of big ifs here. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I just, because, because I was just thinking, like, people coming off Forestville Road, if you're going to Menards, you're going to Walmart, whatever, they're not going to go out to the, to the east.
Yep.
You're just going to keep going through that intersection.
So, from that perspective, it might not necessarily be a terrible thing to change that intersection where it's right turn only.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's an option, where you don't have to cul-de-sack it. The problem is.
Right turn only, and if you, you could go up to the roundabout by Toyota and, you know, whatever.
Then you have an enforcement issue for people coming down and still turning left to get in there. You can put an island in the middle, I, I get it, all those things can be addressed. Uh, it's, it's pretty easy to fix those kind of things. In fact, I think no matter what happens, that will be the first thing you see at this intersection, is some temporary curb islands that prevent certain movements, most likely left turn movements. So, what do you do now, if you're coming here and you need to go into the city? You're going to have to come out, make a right-hand turn, do some sort of loop through this business park, figure out what's the most efficient, and then make a right turn back onto four ninety-two to head into the city. Or you make a right turn, go up to the roundabout, and take the highway into the city. None of that's fun.
So, don't you see Commerce coming out onto Wright Street? It's the very same issue.
Yeah, um, from that perspective, I think you can address some of it by raising that up. Raising that up makes this worse. So, again, I'm only just spitballing this, because I don't have all the tools here to go through any design templates, CAD drawings, or anything like that. This is just me visualizing it, standing out there, so. And it's not my job, so I'm going to leave all of those decisions to the road commission who are responsible for it.
I just have a couple of comments, not so much of a question.
Go ahead.
I think your draft letter is great. I think I completely support this.
John.
Like, there's a certain sequence, your draft letter, there, uh, you want them to sign? Uh, there's a certain sequence of events here, I think, that lead, will lead to a solution at some point, right? If, if you can procure money, then road commission can, you know, put RFP up for actual engineering studies, et cetera, for these, these two options. And it wouldn't be, uh, any hurry for the township board to throw money into that, because if I was a developer, and there was talk of a, a new road going to the east, to, and again, I'll remind everybody that all of this is, is, uh, predicated on the high-density proposed development, and the impact of so much more traffic, that's why the county road commission said, when you get to halfway, the hundred lots or something, this is where we need to take certain steps. And, you know, it's that density, that, that much more traffic that sets all this, uh, in motion. And if you were, they were, if it was determined that the best, there was a really good eastern option for that, I'm not so sure the developer wouldn't look at his infrastructure going out along that road, as opposed to having to burden the cost of rebuilding Forestville Road, just to put a, a sanitary force main down there, you know? So therefore, you know, you may want to, uh, just let all that take its, run its course with the engineering studies to determine all the feasibility and all of that, and.
I don't disagree with any of what you did.
You know what I'm saying? Because, you know, there may very well be, and again, John's right, you know, somebody's got to put a fair amount of money into this, and if you have ten, fourteen million dollars that they're, they ask, I guarantee you, hundreds of thousands of dollars of that will go into an engineering firm's feasibility study, and then the actual design and construction for one or two phases. So, let's get the, let's get the support for the, uh, county to procure some funds, and we'll take this one step at a time, and this is a good letter, it's a good start in favor of.
Someone here have their hand up.
I was just going to ask if, um, the road behind Myers was considered, or I might have missed that.
That's the option that was voted against by the township board. That being said, it's still in our transportation facilities plan, which is adopted by reference by our master plan.
Did they? Where'd that really get there? I could talk to that at that museum, I know.
It's been there since two thousand eight, though.
It was put in there without any public comment or review. I can tell you the history of that, I was involved in that.
But, but.
I don't want to.
I don't, I don't want to disagree with your concern. I just want to say, I wasn't here in two thousand eight to know how it got in there.
That was, uh, that was one of the versions that Rio Tento asked the county.
They weren't here in two thousand eight.
Rio Tento, with their preliminary design, there's, I don't, you want me to get in? Tell the story?
Oh, not really.
We're not doing it, it's not happening.
You know the story?
They already voted no, so it's probably a waste of time at this point.
We'll address it when, if, when and if we have to.
You and I can talk about it more at some point, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
All right, somebody over here?
I have next.
I think so, yes.
It seems like the, the primary issue is, rather than trying to figure out how to deal with the problem, first, it seems like you should minimize the problem. And, and the problem is this high-density, uh, development with hundreds of houses, which means thousands of cars a day is going in and out of there. That's the problem. So, instead of trying to figure out how to fix it, minimize the problem. And, and the whole point is, this has been zoned, you know, minimum acre, five acre lots.
City residential.
For, for ages, and it's the quarter acre lots that's the problem. You know, that's, i-if you make the, you know, people move out there because they want to be out in a semi-rural kind of area, and if, if you stick with the one acre lots minimum, something like that, then you, by an order of magnitude, reduce, reduce the problem. That's, I think that should be the first thought.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing with that point, but that's not what they are coming to us with. They have come to us with a PUD application that we have not seen the official application for yet. I think they're holding off on it to figure out how far they can go with this. Right? So, they're not going to spend too much money doing a final design on something if they know they're going to have to come back later and just scrap the whole plan. They're trying to solve the solution first before they submit their application. They aren't going to be the first ones to deal with that plan. The planning commission is going to. And the planning commission has a role, is to review the plan, to determine if it's compliant with our PUD portion of the ordinance, right? Now, when you get into PUDs, there's a lot more flexibility for back and forth stuff. What that back and forth looks like, we won't know until they submit something. So, I don't disagree. But we all know, that intersection is already bad. If they agree to support the request, we might be able to fix that. After that, whatever happens with the developer's proposal, that's a separate issue. It has to be, even though we know it's what spurred the need to do this now. We also know that recreational opportunities not just for trails, got a waterfall up here, um, there's plenty of scenic things to do up there, um, there's a lot of demand to get out to Forestville, not just the people that currently live there. And I'm not here to tell you what I support as far as their development, because that's not my job. My job is to advise the board on hopefully good policy. If I don't give them good advice, I'm probably not going to be here that long. A ten million dollar ask doesn't come around very often, that's the biggest concern I have, is missing that opportunity.
I believe that property was not always five acre scenic. I think it was something else before that.
It was, and they requested it be changed to five acre scenic during the last rezoning, I think, is what Jason said, because that's what they thought it was going to be at the time. Now, no matter what it's zoned at currently, the PUD process gives them an opportunity to propose something different. And it's, the planning commission's going to have a tough job. I'll be interesting, interested in myself to see what happens there.
It's not a given that the planning commission is necessarily going to approve this high-density development either. I mean, that's a, those are public meetings, and the planning commission's got a tough job, and it's not a given that they'll agree with the first thing that's presented either. Like John said, regardless of the density, it's, um, the problem's there, we got to, we got to try to do something, so.
We need a road that can handle whatever capacity is going to be possible there for the next twenty years, really. Needs there now.
Barbara had her hand up.
I just, would you, um, identify what that east-west is? Is that the power line that you're talking about?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It's, it's the ATC easement, um, right here. I don't think they're going to be able to fit it in with the current clear cut, because there's like four rows of high-tension power lines, there's fiber optics, there's natural gas, it's full. You would never believe that something that wide would be full of stuff, but it is. Even with that power plant shut down, they can't, they can't retire the switch they have, so they still need all that. Meaning, any road that's going to go to the east is going to have to be on longer property, at least to about where this, I think that's an obstacle there. Somewhere in there where their, where their east property line is, and then they have to either somehow get across this easement, or shoot straight out to four ninety-two. I, I personally don't know. I walked around back there, there's a huge ravine in here. Somehow they got to get across that.
Thank you.
I just know that option's not off the table. So, if the township board is going to support the new white paper ask that the road commission intends to send to the, the Lansing, it needs to include both of those options, not knowing which one is going to be buildable.
Anybody else in the audience?
Just a comment, I'm not familiar with the acronyms, PUD, ATC, what are those referred to?
PUD is a planned unit development. ATC is American Transmission Company. It's, it's the, uh, electrical, uh, utility that, that supplies the mid-continental grid, is that right? It's, it's much bigger than us. It's bigger than We Energies, but We Energy supplies power to them, and then they send it wherever it needs to go. Or at least they did.
One other comment I wanted to make, is that a lot of these proposals are trying to figure out ways to make it as easy as possible to get in and out of there. Maybe we don't want to make it as easy as possible to get in and out of there. Maybe we want to make it a little bit difficult to get in and out of there, so that we don't overwhelm the place and, and ruin what makes it so nice. So that if people want, really want to get in there, they can get in there, but it's not easy. You know, it's, it's sort of like you go to Yellowstone, and ninety-nine percent of the people there who go there will never get. the people there who go there will never get more than a hundred yards from their car, which keeps all the rest of the park kind of nice if you get a hundred yards away from the road. And maybe the same kind of thing here.
I think it's a great idea, but the township doesn't own the property. So, the property owner has a right to develop it, right?
Oh, well, if the planning commission and the board approve the plan, I don't think they could do anything.
No, they have to be able...
It has to be compliant with our ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance.
If it's compliant with our ordinance, we can't say no.
Now, that's, that's what they said down on Lakeshore when they wanted to put up a four-story hotel right across from Picnic Rocks. They said the same thing, oh, well, if it's compliant with the, with the ordinance, then we have to approve it, and it just wasn't true.
No, they said it was not compliant.
Yeah.
I read the article.
Based, based on fitting into, uh, the neighborhood just stalled and things like that. It wasn't just, you know, and already, we know that this is its own for...
So I think we're getting a little off-track around the buses back there.
So, you know, it, it doesn't meet ordinances. And so what we're saying is, I don't think that we're compelled to change the ordinances to accommodate a developer.
We're going to operate that way.
I know you, I know, I was here at the last meeting. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
They're going to review what our, what our PUD requirements are in the, in the zoning ordinance, and then they're going to decide whether or not it's compliant enough to approve it, as well as they can do. And again, the planning commission can only recommend it for the board to approve. So...
What else? Anything else?
Just quick, you mentioned the hall road before, the paved hall road?
Yep.
Is that open to public traffic now?
I don't believe it's open yet, because they have to do some guard room first. Because there's some corners that are...
Yeah, and, and that's what I saw, the gate on, at least on the...
It's open, yeah.
You can drive it, but it's not legally open.
And the gates aren't always open either.
Yeah.
Open and closed, I don't know.
Well, and I think there's still like private property signs and stuff up, so it kind of...
The road commission has ownership of the actual right of way.
Okay, alright.
They're just not opening it to the public until they have all the state deeds and improvements done.
But at some point in time, no matter what happens here, that's going to be a road?
That's, like, correct. In fact, that is a, that is Class A standard road, meaning it can be a county primary, and I think that's their intention. The problem is...
Looked up to anything, yeah.
I think we can tie this all together real quick. If you have a loop that comes all the way around back to Wright Street, you now have a Class A hall road around the city. That's why it was being called a bypass room. And that's why we had a roomful of some of these same people saying, all that truck traffic's going to be right in my backyard. And I think that's why they said we probably shouldn't rush on that. That's my guess. I was here, it's a feeling I got.
Yeah, we were pretty clear about it.
Yeah.
Uh, Nate Lowen, just FYI, I live on, on 225 Forestville Basin Trail, so the trail, we're actually getting some development on our trail road, which is city, but you might not know that, so...
That's over here, right?
Yeah, we're going to get eight more lots that are going to go in here. I think Bruce Pesel is putting these in here, maybe one, maybe even nine. And then we've got a couple more houses going in across here too. So we've got maybe, I don't know, ten more houses going in. So that's going to be more use on the road too.
The pressure is there. No matter what we try to do, the pressure is there. And when we see it, we have to react to it if we didn't have a plan for it, or if we're not willing to stick to the plan we had for it. There wasn't support for the original plan, however it got in there, and I'm not going to argue with anybody, because it's a waste of time. And I, it's not because I disagree with him, it's just I wasn't here for it, so I, I have only conjecture.
But John, the harder we make the transportation, that's when accidents happen. People get anxious as they come to the intersections.
People are forced to make bad decisions. And that's what actually happens here right now.
Right.
During rush hour, if you're the second or third car in line and you go to make a left-hand turn, and there's been no gaps for what seems like forever, but it's probably been fifteen, twenty seconds, you're going to squeeze in a gap that didn't exist, and you never saw that car coming around the corner.
Years ago, we didn't have that many tra, uh, people coming from Harvey. I went out there the other morning, and we always used to, from the bypass in South Front Street. The pass, almost going into Harvey, it was continuous. So, and they planned for that, that's why they did...
Try to get out of Ace Hardware at that time of day.
I know. I'll show you how to do that.
Okay, what else? Sam wants to make a comment.
I'm going to support sending a letter requesting support for the, the county to get money to do the research needed. The detailed drawings and all are not available now, and they won't be available. We won't know what their proposals really be, what they'll really be, until we give them the funds to work with. And the only way you're going to get the funds to work with is if we request this without knowing exactly what's going to come of it. But we need, we do know for sure that the Wright Street intersection is never going to get fixed if we don't move off of the dime. And that's why we have to do what is before us tonight. We have to request funds, and then when the funds are available, we'll work with the county, road commission, emphasizing that we want the primary attitude of what they're fixing is to fix that intersection. Get that done, and then move on to other things. We're going to have to just have faith that we can control it, because we can, as a group, come here and have more meetings. They're not going to get anything done eventually if they don't have the community support. And our primary interest is that intersection first.
I don't disagree with that point, but they've made it clear that they're concerned about the constructibility of it. So, we just all need to be aware of that and cross our fingers, because I want to see a roundabout there, and I'm not alone.
Anything else, folks?
We need the money to do it.
Without this infrastructure money from Lansing, none of this will happen.
Thank you for letting us have the dialogue with you. Appreciate the informality.
Go ahead.
One comment. You talked about the development there, which is two-hundred-and-so much, whatever it is. Look at the total picture, on that total area, past that, where's the growth going to be? It's coming. The city of Marquette does not have that much land, so where's it moving? It's moving this way. Where it's going to be, we don't know, but there's, when you look at open land and people own open land, they want to do something with it. So it's going to happen. Maybe not next year, not next year, a year after, five years, it's going to happen. I remember when I moved here in sixty-nine, there was nothing on the highway, nothing. Planning commission said, nothing's going to happen there, nothing's going to happen there. So, you're looking at fifty years from there, from there. What's going to happen in the next thirty years, forty years? We don't know. So, we're trying to fix something now, and it may suffice what we're talking about now, but we don't know what's, what's going to happen in the next five or six, seven, eight years. Well, that fix is going to handle everything we want. We don't know. We have to go with the best gifts we have at this point in time, and this is the direction we have to go to move forward.
Lynn?
Start anyway.
Lynn, comment?
Sure.
If we do nothing, we still got a death trap there. And development in that area is going to develop, not even talking about what they want to plan there, but we still have a death trap at that intersection.
And, and quite honestly, at some point, the road commission would be forced to do some sort of double cul-de-sac, because it can't handle any more traffic. And then everyone's forced to go up to 550 that's south of that double cul-de-sac. That's my way of looking at it from a purely realistic perspective, if the traffic got that bad. With a fire response, you can, you can still get fire equipment through a double cul-de-sac if it's designed properly. It'd have to be gated to keep the public from doing it.
Okay, we have motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Alright, any more public comment?
Can I just say one, one last thing?
Sure.
I, I know I've talked way too much tonight, but I just want to say, we have a lot more success with anything we do, if you all participate. If it's an empty room, how do they know what anyone's thinking? You have to be involved in the process, or your voice will never be considered. So, if you can't attend in person, send a letter, send an email, whatever. Uh, stop by during the week. Uh, our doors are always open. I guess that's it.
Is there a, um, somewhere we can direct letters of support that would help with this application? That anybody could...
To the township, if you want to send them to me, because I'm the coordinator, I guess. That's fine. We all have links on the website, and it'll go directly to us, or if you want to drop something off. Sure.
It doesn't hurt to send it directly to the road commission too?
Yeah.
Since they're the ones that'll be applying for the funding?
Yeah, I just didn't know if you go with the application to the funding source. I mean, I assume these are recovery funds, and they're making decisions at, you know, legislative level, but...
It's, it's the Infrastructure Act money, yeah.
It is, okay.
A big pot of money that we will probably never see again in our lifetime. Because we'll be paying for it the rest of our lives.
For sure.
So I just, I just, okay, go ahead.
So I just have one comment. I have to say that I'm impressed to see that you all got the information that the meeting was tonight on such short notice. So I think we have to say thank you to Andra for sending that email out, because I'm guessing many of you got that email, and if you didn't, you need to share your email address with the township.
We did last time, and I think only one, I don't know how you heard of it, Lynn, but Sue Petchsky in our neighborhood sent it out saying, and we have a neighborhood...
Emails, yeah, group.
Wondering if we had heard it. No one had heard of this.
So you need to go to the township office, and the receptionist is the person that you need to give your email address to, and you will get notified of all the things that the rest of us get notified of through the email.
Or she sent me an email, Lynn.
Or...
Because I got it.
Okay, so if you go to the township website also, there's, um, this was put on as an urgent alert, and if you sign up with your email on the township website, any urgent alerts, because all special meetings have to be like that, you'll get that email when that goes out.
And go to the township Facebook page a thousand times a day, give us all those hits, because we're counting them.
Send it from your Facebook.
It's on the top of the front page of the Mining Journal today.
Yeah, yeah.
At least for this one.
Yeah, but, but it isn't always at the top of the Mining Journal list, because they have so many things, but...
Top of the front page.
If you want to get information, you need to get yourself out there so you can get that information. That's just what I'm saying. I'm not going to drive by and read what's on the signage out here. Not when gas is four thirty-nine or something.
Okay, you want to review our, like, two motions?
Okay, our motions this evening were to approve the agenda as presented. That was approved, and the second motion was to approve the letter of support for the Forestville Road improvements, the two options that the supervisor will submit, and that was approved.
I, I just have one quick thing on that too. I'm sorry, I, I thought I was going to keep my mouth closed, but in the second paragraph of the letter of support, I do have to make a minor revision on it before it gets signed, because it says the new connection to Wright Street east of the current intersection. If you look at Wright Street geographically, it's actually northeast, so I'm going to make that correction before Lynn signs it.
Amen.
Anything else from the board?
Okay, no.
One minute.
Since I have people here, I'm going to give you my clerks' spiel short. Uh, tomorrow's the last day you can get a absentee ballot by mail. We're open on Saturday from seven-thirty to three-thirty to come into the office and get an absentee ballot if you so desire, or turn it in, or register to vote. Monday, you can still get an absentee ballot, but it has to stay in the building, can't leave, and then Tuesday's election day, polls are open seven AM to eight PM.
Hey, any other board members? Any other? Okay.
Ernie, did you want to say something?
No, all.
Make the motion re-adjourn.
Any support?
I'll support it.
Okay.
I don't know.
You've got to call the vote first.
I know.
It's seven-thirty-five.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Seven-thirty-five. Thank you for coming, everybody. We really appreciate it.